Tucker, do you have an extra paper agenda?
I'm good. I take anyone's. I have somebody else. They got too much stuff here.
I think it was just me.
Wait, so we'll.
I don't think.
How'd you get that tea, Tom?
I'm missing one.
And you're. You're in the school system now?
All right. Okay, and this is. Got it.
Union.
All right.
I'm I'm hoping that's.
Nice new book.
Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the seven P M. November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the town council of the town of New Canaan. We'll first start with the pledge of allegiance. So if everyone would please rise. Told you there's no textbook.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey. The roll call.
Yes.
Now I'll take the roll call. Why don't we just go down one by one? Because we don't have a list of names. So everyone just please start by stating that you're present.
Your name, maybe?
Name and present.
Jennifer Zonis, present.
Eric Tunam, present.
Kimberly Norton, present.
Rita Batino, present.
Annie Young, present.
Hillary Ormond, present.
Michael Morrow, present.
Christina Ross, present.
Tom Butterworth, present.
Maria Naughton, present.
Lou Calhoun, present.
Janet Fons, present.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, great. Thank you, Tucker. So actually, before we commence with the written agenda and the minutes, well, actually, let's just do the minutes. So we'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes of the following regular meeting of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Your motion?
I so moved. Oh, you want to talk about?
Take the motion.
Motion.
Motion. Motion. Yeah. You make it. I'll make this. I move adoption.
Second.
Discussion on on the approval of the minutes for the following following regular meeting of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Do we know what the changes are?
I'm about to tell you.
Yes. Discussion.
So it these are just minor discussion of library loans. There's a reference to the phase one having been completed that said twice. So to clarify that in the first line of the third paragraph, we would add the word mostly completed mostly. And then in the fourth paragraph, the second sentence instead of would reduce the total borrowing exposure to for both building projects would be reduced, change that to the building projects to be reduced. Very technical.
Any other changes, proposed changes?
No.
Okay. Any discussion on those proposed edits? Now, having heard no further discussion, we'll now take a vote on the motion to make the two edits that were read into the record by Tom Butterworth. All in favor? All in opposition? Motion passes unanimously. Before we continue on with public comments, are there any motions to add any items to the agenda?
Yeah, yes, I would like to actually add two items to the agenda. One is a recap of the ice rink season. That would be one. And and then I also wanted to add a personal statement that I would like to make at the end of the session.
Okay, fine. So just proceed. I think procedural will do is we'll do one. We'll get the ice rink up in front after. Think after Andrew's presentation, Tucker, can we do that? So we'll add the agenda, the ice rink to the agenda after the treasurer's report. That would be the first proposal.
Do I need to rewrite? Do I need to remake the motion so that it's separate?
Yes, so let's do that. So.
I'd like to make a motion to add an ice rink recap to the agenda.
Okay, do we have a second of that motion? Second.
He's gonna move this along.
Time.
That's right.
Do it. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All in opposition? Motion passes. Motion number two.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to add a personal statement at the end of the meeting.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Does anyone have any discussion on the motion? No, having heard no discussion, we will now make a take a vote on the motion to add a personal statement by Miss Patino.
Sorry, we're moving a little faster. Can I go back to the discussion part of your of this motion? Yep. Could you not use the public comments time or? Honestly, it doesn't matter to me however you we want to do it. I mean, I could use the public. I asked Mike what he recommended, and he suggested maybe to put it at the end.
I really, I yeah, just only because we spoke about it, I thought that would just be the better way to just move it along. But unless someone we'd prefer to have it during public comments, if there are any, that 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 works too.
Think public com or there's these public comments are supposed to be on agenda topics.
Okay, that's fair enough. Okay.
So it may come during, you know, reports.
Right. So let's keep it. We'll keep it as a standalone motion agenda item at the end. So all in favor? On opposition? Motion passes. We will now move forward to item number three on the agenda, public comments. Our members of the public are welcome to speak to the town council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address, and comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Are there? Is there anybody in the audience, whether virtual or in person, that would like to have a comment to the town council?
If there's anybody online, you just need to raise your. I don't see anybody.
Okay, having no public comments, we will now move to number four on the agenda, the first selectmen's comments. Kevin, the floor is yours.
Good to see you all. Congratulations to the new members. You notice we changed this from updates to comments, and I just want to make a few comments. If you want to hear about any updates, you know, most of the things that I talked about last month are still in motion. Things are going much longer these days because of lack of lack of supply chain parts and stuff. So it's kind of frustrating. Police Department project looks to be on schedule. Hopefully, we'll police department will move in the second week of January. It's December. But yeah, you know, I would just make some comments about the relationship of a first selectman to the town council. I've served four years on the town council before I became first selectman. I've attended virtually every meeting of the town council and many subcommittee meetings. I even left my hospital room after my stroke in three days and came to the town council that meeting that 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 night and the tradition is the first life and come to the town council meetings because now first selectman is an ex officio member of this body and breaks ties, which don't occur very often. But it does occur occasionally. So I fully expect my successor will continue that tradition. Wasn't always followed in the past, but but it's very important because otherwise things can slip between the cracks and people don't know where things are going. And you know, it's important that people simply be candid and ask, you know, when I gave updates, I said, this is not exactly first, what do they call the prime minister's questions, which is quite a thing to watch on public television, the kind of banter they had back and forth. But I always had an open door. It's kind of surprising. You know, there's only three or four members of this body that has seen me in the past few years. Nobody ever ever comes to my office and rarely calls. By the same token, I don't, I didn't think it was my role to come and lobby for things on the agenda. It's your decision. Our staff and I make presentations. So I don't, I never went out of my way to ever call and try to lobby something. So I just want to make those comments. I've enjoyed being first selectman. I've enjoyed working with all of you who have worked in the past. I it's quite an honor and privilege to service first selectman. It's not an easy job. So you know, people should be mindful of the fact that every day there's a lot of pressures in this job. And you know, I would encourage town council people to cooperate, call, visit. Makes for better relations. And so that's all I want to say. I want to thank you for opportunity to work with you. I'm not going anywhere. I do think we should do charter revision. Because there's a number of things when you're sitting in this seat, you see need to be changed. And we don't want to do what Stanford did and have an abortion avoided process for charter revision. We've always done it well in the past. I do think there's things that need to be rethought and changed in some regard. So be happy to answer questions as always.
Kevin, thank you so much for your comments. As I said earlier, thank you for your service and certainly we'll use you as a very good resource moving forward and however you can continue to serve the town. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving along. Next up, number five on the agenda is cash, cash management and interest income. Ann Kelly and Andrew Brooks, come on down.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Congratulations. Congratulations to the new members and to the new leadership. Happy to be here. I didn't know, Anne, if did you want to say anything to start, or do you want me to just dive right in to the numbers?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen, although I think Tucker, you need to enable me to do that. Okay, perfect. Okay. Yeah. There we go. So I just wanted to give a quick update about where we stand with our interest income so far this fiscal year as you enter the budget season. You know, you need to keep in mind, you know, what we're expected to to get in our interest from our investments with the rates moving high so quickly last year. I just wanted to quickly show this graphic, just so you have a sense from the last twenty, twenty-five years, how the rates dramatically went up and are approaching the highest they've been since two thousand and seven. So that has been a nice windfall for the town in that now we can place our money in higher interest-bearing accounts. I've been working closely with our banking partners, asking that they keep moving their rates up in alignment with the Fed's rate increases because they don't always do that. So you do have to prod them and you know, encourage them to move them up or shop elsewhere for for your deposits. But I've been largely investing our our excess cash in treasuries because it's safe. Because we can project based on our historical, you know, burn through through our cash with monthly expenses, usually around twelve million or so a month, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less, depending on the month. We're able to project out how long we can keep our money locked up in a in a treasury before we need the cash available to pay an expense. And so you'll see here, you know, this is just the history of all the rate increases going from a Fed funds rate of a quarter basis point, you know, point two five percent all the way up to five point two five to five point five percent just in a year's time. And it is expected that rates are going to stay flat. You know, there's, I think I saw today ninety-five percent odds that they're not going to do any further rate hikes through, you know, into the next calendar year. And Goldman Sachs is projecting in Q four of next year of, you know, so around this time next year, that's when we might start seeing some rate cuts, depending on what the economic data is looking like, where inflation is. So there are a lot of different factors that go into it. So these are all things that I'm continuously monitoring. I'm paying attention to the Fed minutes to any any guidance that's coming out just to project further where, you know, how that's going to impact us as a town. So in terms of numbers, so far, we're we've earned roughly eight hundred and twenty-two thousand in interest to date. That's just in the first four months of the fiscal year. And just for comparison purposes, we had earned three hundred and thirty-six thousand by this point in the prior fiscal year. So we are, you know, more than double in terms of the income that we're accruing. I do have one little TBD here for a Chase account. I was not able to get that figure in time for the meeting, but we'll have it for next time. But it's it's a pretty small, you know, it's within three to four thousand dollars that that I'm not including in here. And this also, these are the big primary accounts where we have large cash balances. We have many more accounts that have smaller balances, some of which earn a little bit of interest, some which are not interest-bearing. So I just wanted to focus this on the main accounts. In terms of our total position, I have some metrics here. You know, we have a little over twenty million in cash. And keep in mind, we collect our our taxes twice a year in both July and then in January. So we had, we earned a lot of our interest at the start of the fiscal year. And then as you start spending the money down, you have less money that you're earning interest on. So your interest income is also going to start to decrease before the next tax collection, and then it will shoot up again. Again, assuming the rates are are stable. So that's why you see about twenty point five million in cash, three point eight million in CDs that we own. And again, these are, you know, locked in for various terms. I'd say we do have a pretty short term portfolio, given that we may need to access this cash. And we don't want to sell before maturity, although we have had to do that a little bit from time to time, but we've realized gains when we've done it. I've made sure that we've never realized any losses from any transactions that we've done. And so we have just under thirty million in treasuries. We have a big one that's coming due very soon. And so we're going to free up that cash, give that to Anne to pay our bills. So I know we we talked about doing that at some point, you know, next week. So we're on track to do that. And then we set some agency securities as well that we've held for a few years now. Unfortunately, they're lower interest-bearing back when the rates were much lower. So we're at a buy and hold for those because we don't want to take any losses. And so long as you hold a maturity, you get your entire principal back, plus the interest that has accrued. So anyway, just happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to share some data points with you as we, you know, head into budget season.
Thank you, Andrew. It looks like we're in actually pretty, pretty good shape under your your supervision here. So great job. Any questions?
I I'd like to make a comment, Andrew. I think, given the very drastic change in the economic environment and the industry environment, you and the team has done an exceptional job managing like short term and kind of mapping and having a blended portfolio. It's a lot of people who are caught on their heels. And a lot of people in your position are are not in the current situation that you're in for liquidity and access to capital. So I think you, you know, had a really strong pulse on the market and, you know, put us in the position of of success. And listen, you if we had a crystal ball, we we probably wouldn't be sitting here. But given the the market conditions, I think you you guys have done an unbelievable job.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give on top. Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Andy, do you want to say something?
No, I was just going to go with what Andrew said in regards to how we do things and some changes we did make that enhanced it. We typically have the past couple of years, twenty million has been our basis that happened out there in different agencies. And we changed some positives. So we closed out some bank accounts. We made them ZBAs. So there's all these residual cat balances. We made them ZBAs because they were functioning accounts, so we could filter it back to like a feeder fund, which is our general fund. In doing that, we're able to every six months do an additional twenty million dollars. So at any point at the beginning, we have actually forty million dollars out investing. And then, as Andrew said, we drain that twenty back because we do need it back by the end of December because we're waiting for those tax. So we also implemented VCH payments to our vendors. So about fifty percent of our vendors now are on the A stage program, which means we can control the cash better versus checks and what those balances are. And in doing that, we want to keep the balances. Andrew's been very clear about wanting to keep those balances low from a protection collateralization, things like that. So we, in doing that, were able to keep those cash balances now in our general fund. Which are considered uncollateralized. Or insured, I should say, they're collateralized but not insured. Low, we keep them typically around six million now where they had been up over. So we've done a lot of little tiny things to try and keep that going to give Andrew that hash to be able to get those rates with that extra twenty million every six months.
Yeah.
I was just going to say.
Go ahead. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Tom. I just wanted to echo Luke's comments and just say thank you to both of you for what you've done and the proactive management, the money management, I think, is exceptional and is is my guess, probably a role model for other towns. And I think the taxpayers are super happy to hear this because I'm we're all taxpayers here. So I'm just thrilled to hear that we're making so much money in interest. So thank you.
Could you comment on the impact on budget? And also, as a subset of that, are we also paying immense amount of interest rates that dull this, the beauty of this picture or no?
Interest rates in terms of what our debt or?
Right.
Well, obviously.
So we're ahead.
We're ahead. Oh, no, we're definitely ahead. And as Andrew said, to be, we're, you know, close to eight hundred, nine hundred thousand at this point, when our full budget for the year was nine hundred, because we didn't know which way it was going to go. To have that and our gains are are unrealized gains are all positives right now, where this time last year they were in the negative, pretty high. So this year is trending so much better for us that we we should have a good overage in that interest side.
And then the other positive thing, too, is with when we go out to bond, probably in, I guess, March timeframe. You know, we don't know what the rate environment is going to look like exactly, although we are seeing the the yield curve, especially when you go out fifteen years for these bonds. That's been actually dropping the interest rates, right? The short term rates are still very high, but the longer term rates are actually coming down a bit. And so that actually is going to help us get a decent rate on these bonds. It's going to be higher than prior bond issues. But it's going to still be way lower than the five plus percent that we're getting on our money. So we're going to have a positive arbitrage there. So we're we're in good shape on that front.
Great. Love it. Anybody else? Okay, we're all set. Let's move. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
You did it.
Well, it's it.
Oh, you did it. It's up.
All right.
So now we'll move forward with the added agenda item regarding the ice rink.
So first off, I want to make sure some folks are on Zoom.
Jean is on. Tom O'Day is on. Is Mary?
Fantastic. No, well, Sarah or I it might just be those two. Okay. So, yeah, so unfortunately, Jean Goodman and Tom O'Day couldn't make it here tonight, but we wanted to give the town, town council and town a recap on the really successful rink season we had last year as we go into the next season. We're on season two now. We're really super excited, but we we wanted to just give a nod to the town. While we're getting our funding from a variety of sources, including Tony Boucher, including the state, including our wonderful donors that have donated and including local businesses who are sponsors. We're we're really getting a lot of support, but we've also gotten a lot of support from the town in terms of helping us get our utilities, the permitting. Tiger Man has been amazing helping us get everything going. And so in addition to saying thank you so much and and the support of the Board of Selectmen and Town Council, we just wanted to let you know how it went. So yeah, next slide. So. All right. And if not, then maybe I'll just talk through it. I'll just keep talking. So first of all, we had a great first season. Forty-nine days were were used at the rink. We estimated about thirty-three hundred people that visited the rink. We were able to get almost a thousand followers on Facebook and Instagram, just like literally in one season, which is amazing. We've had a tremendous support from the community and rave reviews all around. Oh, you got it. I'll just keep going. Yeah. We'll be we'll be adding that to the capital expenditure. So the biggest winners really, so I I was there literally almost every day at the rink, and it was so fun to see a lot of the families and a lot of the younger kids. And I would say, you know, looking at the number, the breakout of who came, children under twelve really benefited the most. Almost seventy percent of our sales came directly from children under twelve. And we're estimating, we had, we sold about eighty-one season passes, and we're estimating about two hundred and thirty, hopefully, to be sold this year. It served really a lot of purposes throughout the town. We had newcomers events, we had skating lessons, we had Girl Scout outings, we had birthday parties. It was, we really tried to touch the people from the nature center did a skating program like we really tried to reach every nook and cranny of the of the town. We also partnered with local businesses like Weeden Darié, Rand Insurance, Greenology, and the New Canaan Community Foundation was also a partner and William Ravis. So a lot of support from the local businesses as well. We also, we employed a lot of New Canaan High School teens to work the rink. So we were able to give them some pocket money as well. And it's actually, I just wanted to point out when it says we reached a broad spectrum of New Canaan. So if you want to just look at these pictures, we, you know, families, kids, teens. We had a senior, a woman who used to love to skate on the ponds growing up, and she no longer could. And she came out when her name is Wendy Opal, and she came out and was just thrilled with the with the rink and 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 being able to skate. We also had a few local celebrities, Samantha Bee and Jason Jones. Actually, I found out they live in New Canaan and they stopped by. So it was just, it was a great just mix of all kinds of folks from all over New Canaan. And I think just in terms of going forward, we're really excited to, and you can, it's actually, you just go to the pictures. That's fine. Just to show folks the pictures. I do want to say some of the rave reviews that we got, just a couple of things that people said. So it's been years since I skated. I used to skate the local ponds. That was Wendy. A real gem for our town. I can't get my kids off the ice. Such a great addition to our town. I had the best time. I grew up in this town and I'm visiting my parents. I wish we had this rink growing up. We just got so many comments like that. People were really, really excited. So just to give you a little preview, we are targeting a longer season this year and we're hoping to to open up the weekend of December eighth. So that's our target, and it might be a little earlier if we can get it done, weather permitting. We will have some rental skates just up to size five. So we won't have all rental skates, but up to size five will be covered, which we're really excited about. We're going to continue to serve hot chocolate for free, which is a really big attribute and which the kids like. And this year, we are also, we're trying out a little different, a trial offer. We we really want to to thank the town by offering either discounted free passes. We're not sure what it's going to be yet. But some benefit for all the town employees and teachers to be able to come to the rink, either for free or discounted version, because we really want everyone to be involved, and we want to thank the town. At this point, I want to see if Jean or Tom just want to add a few more comments. Because it it's, it's, yeah, if they can.
Hello? Can you hear me?
No, no, financially touching. We can skip that. Yeah. So, Tom, do you want to say a few words?
I just want to say thank you to this, to obviously Rita and Jean who are on this. It was obviously a big group effort. We really appreciate Tiger Man. It was a a great group effort, and we're so excited to be opening up for our second season, Tony Boucher Community Rink. And just encourage everyone to go to our website, ncrink.com and buy your season passes. We need to sell season passes. And please take a look and consider donating as well. And thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Tom.
Anyway, thanks again, and season pass is on sale now. Jean, do you want to say anything really quick?
Well, just you have spoken so well, as so has Tom to, so just add my thanks to all the members on the various town bodies and committees and the public as well for such a wonderful encouraging, opening efforts to to get us up and running. Appreciate it. Thanks so much again.
Awesome. And come on down. And I also just want to say thank you to Scott Rose, Sarah Resia, Patrick M. Edmonds, and the rest of our volunteer crew. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you so much. It's a fantastic. facility for the town. Okay, number seven on the agenda is the cemetery. Oh, so I understand I currently listed on our agenda is item number six is library loan documents slash legacy building. So we were supposed to take a vote this evening related to the loan documents for the library, but I've been informed that that issue has subject to additional discussion at the Board of Finance. So therefore, we're going to remove it from our agenda and not discuss it or take a vote on that issue tonight.
Just to let you know, so the plan is right now that the Board of Finance will hopefully hold a special meeting in time. So that if there's, if a special appropriation is put forward, we will advertise it for the two full weeks that we have to. And then you all can take it up at your December meeting.
Thank you. So next up, number seven, the cemetery maintenance proposal. You guys want to step up? Grab a microphone so we can hear you and everyone out in TV land, as John Engel would say, can hear you.
This is Leo. And Leo presented to the Board of Finance last night and that is his assistant here. Leo, you might have read about Leo. He has done, spending a lot of time making this awareness program about the cemeteries. And he met with Tiger Man and myself. And we encouraged him to come before you all. He spoke to the Board of Finance last night. He's got some great information, some great ideas. I'm going to make you co-host so you can share.
Thank you so much for coming before us this evening. We're really excited to hear the presentation. So do you need access first before you want to start? Or would you like to start?
So I already introduced me, so I don't need to do that myself. But as you know, I'm here to discuss why the county is to better maintain all of our public cemeteries. The problem right now is that the majority of the public cemeteries in our town have turned into jungles, but things like massive overgrowth, fallen trees and broken gravestones. All this not only disrespects the founders of our town, but also the veterans. And in addition, it also reflects badly on our town as a whole, having badly maintained historic, important historical landmarks. And as demonstrated by this photo and a lot of the other photos in this slideshow, there's an obvious lack of funding. Many towns around us like Darien also have a specific annual budget line for this maintenance, which is something that we don't have as a town. The scope of the problem, as you can see on this map, that is not loading in. There are seven public cemeteries, the ones with recent burials. Or these are seven public cemeteries according to the DPW, but now they're they're more on the list that we want to get maintained. The ones with more recent burials are better maintained, but the ones with older burials that have with older burials are all but forgotten. The current budget of seventy-six hundred dollars, five thousand dollars, of which is a one-time grant from the from state government is inadequate, given the given the state of most of these cemeteries. The current volunteer approach is unsustainable. Volunteers have put a lot of effort into this project, but it's way too large of a product project for ad hoc volunteer initiatives. For example, a woman by the name of Kristen Pace made it her twenty twenty COVID project to restore the Canoe Hill Cemetery. But then after she moved to London, the cemetery was forgotten. I joined a community volunteer initiative in twenty twenty-one. And by that time, only a year after she stopped maintaining it, because she moved, the grass was growing above my head. That's around six, seven feet tall. I'm also a student, so I can't exactly spend most of my time cutting grass in public cemeteries while trying to balance a junior year workload. This picture is what it, another picture that didn't load in. This picture is what it looked like this year. It's completely, it's fallen into a state of disrepair and large weeds and and general overgrowth. This is why we need a municipal solution to this problem. What needs to be done? There needs to be creation of an annual budget line specifically for cemetery maintenance. Need to include funding for appropriate maintenance and initial restoration. And all of this can be done at the minimum cost, according to Tiger Man. Yes, when I just talked with him, he said around two thousand dollars in cemetery for appropriate maintenance, which is the operational cost, which will be recurring per year. There's broad support for this. There was a petition created for this project, which has over four hundred fifty signatures. We also have support from the Daughters of the American Revolution who spoke yesterday. Chris Shipper, the head of the Conservation Commission, retired police chief Liam Korolakowski. And all the volunteers who have spent their, put their time and effort into maintaining these cemeteries. There are obvious benefits, like the moral imperative, is this just the right thing to do to honor the veterans and the people buried in these cemeteries? It also beautifies neighborhoods and creates additional usable green space, which has not only never hurt anyone, but also makes cemeteries more accessible as places of contemplation. Okay, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation, Mike. Do you want to say anything?
My name's Mike McLean. I'm the commander of the New Canaan VFW. And I'm here to support the project that Lula has undertaken. The VFW stands a hundred percent behind this project. One of the principles of the VFW is to honor and remember every veteran alive or deceased. And this, we've done a lot of work, but I should say, there's been a project we've backed with the Boy Scouts over the years. Chris Wilson's son. And Leo mentioned, I think, eight cemeteries. We come up with fourteen. And we've documented seventy-eight veterans, combat veterans. We honor every veteran, not just combat veterans, but there's a lot of them go back to the Civil War. Like, for example, I've got the whole list here. Selix Corner. There's twenty Civil War veterans in that cemetery. Churchill is thirteen. Silvermine Road has eighteen. And the whole list goes on. There's a total of like seventy-eight. So it's our responsibility as VFW to make sure these cemeteries are better taken care of than they are. And it's a great thing for the town to have this, it's a community project. So I'd like to ask for the Town Council to support. It's a great thing. But we've got a map of all of them on here and we've got a lot of information. We can tell you who these people are. When they got in the service, what their rank was, and this is goes way back Spanish-American War II. This does not include Lakeview. There's a lot more down in Lakeview. We take care of that one separately. There's thirteen hundred veterans that we take care of down there. This is strictly, like I said, fourteen cemeteries around the town. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mike. That was fantastic. Perhaps we can make part of the minutes of the meeting your material. If you wouldn't mind sharing that with us, your list and your map. I think that'd be fantastic. Anyone have any comments about the presentation?
Before you have questions, I guess this mic, that's probably the problem. That, one of the things that Leo, the reason why Leo is coming before you is we we are thinking that we're going to put this into the budget. If Tiger were here, he's across the street at another meeting, but he presented last night and said that we've gotten a neglected cemetery grant, which is fabulous to help with some of this, but it really makes, takes care of a springtime, go in and clean up and a fall, not a lot of in between. Maybe one or two mows a summer, is that what he said? So thanks to Leo and obviously Mike and others, we really think that this is a worthwhile project. And so we just wanted to let you know, Leo wanted to present and also let you know that this will probably be coming forward in a bunch of processes.
Some of these cemeteries were disgraceful. Tiger Man did some work for us last year. One of the worst ones was on Frog Town. You can't see it when you go down Frog Town there. It was just covered over. And there's like, must be seventy-five or a hundred people buried in there. It's a pretty large cemetery. And they took care of that. Took them a whole day.
Yeah, I had a question. When you say you need two thousand dollar budget per cemetery, does that include taking it, taking care of it once a year or throughout the season?
Based on what I talked, I was just talking to Tiger before I went into his meeting. That's a whole year maintenance per cemetery, mowings, tree trimmings, all that stuff, the operational cost per cemetery.
Okay. And this will be presented through the budget process to include.
The way it was left last night was Tiger will really get a whole inventory of all of the the cemeteries that need to be attended to provide budget numbers around that, and that will be part of the.
Is this something that would be taken care by the town or would it be subcontracted out?
No, DPW.
Directly. Okay.
I just have a quick question. Leo, I just find this remarkable. I just, out of curiosity, how does a teen become interested in cemeteries? Fascinating.
So my brother's currently serving in the Navy. So and I come from a lot of, a long line of veterans. So Veterans Affairs and stuff like that is something that's important to me. And also I've grown up right near the Canoe Hill Cemetery and I have a lot of memories with my brother playing in that cemetery. So seeing it fall into a jungle is kind of sad because I have a lot of good memories from that. So, yeah, that's how I've gotten into this project.
Very impressive, Leo. Just have a question that we're all curious about. Do you plan to serve?
I don't know.
Sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Thank you so much.
Quickly, I attended the Veterans Day Ceremony on Saturday.
Some of these cemeteries are being taken care of by people right now. I mean, a lot of them are in good shape, but a lot of them are not.
Right. I think this is a very worthy project. Thank you to your brother and your family members who have served. I'm a granddaughter and daughter of combat veterans, so combat veterans, I should say. So I understand that, you know, the sacrifice a family makes, and I think that this is a worthwhile project and I appreciate you presenting it. And thank you for the Veterans Day Ceremony. It was really moving and lovely.
Let's have a quick comment. Hi, I think it's long overdue. I've driven by different cemeteries in Norwalk and Darien. And I drive by some of ours and I say, why aren't we doing the same thing? So I think you did a terrific presentation and thank you so much for taking this on.
Eric?
Yeah, I just echo what everybody else is saying. Thank you. But also want to say, since I attended the Board of Finance meeting last night, my understanding is Christina, there will be a one-time restoration cost and ongoing maintenance. So it's not just two thousand dollars per cemetery a year going forward. There's going to be something else, be two parts to it.
That'll be like repairing of headstones, which I thought, no, for preparing stone walls, doing any initial, but that's a one-time.
Yeah, there's restoration, which is one time and then there's ongoing maintenance.
Budget cycle that's not ongoing. Thank you.
And can I just ask a quick question? Do you happen to know, was there any history of like, at any point, like the beautification or the garden club? Or any of those organizations focusing on this or contributing?
I know the Daughters of the American Revolution, they've, they maintain, they do a lot of work on the Carter Street Cemetery. And when Tiger Man was first joint, first joined the force or first became DPW coordinator, he tried to get everyone sorted, but he's the head of the DPW, there's a lot going on, so. He couldn't make it work and that's something I kind of want to recreate and do.
Right. So there was nothing consistent already. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any further comments?
Yep. I think that's awesome. I can't, I was listening to you wondering how in the world have we not been taking care of the cemeteries? And I assume they're all town-owned properties. I was wondering, do you think there are any unknown, like are there any we don't know about yet or that haven't made it on the inventory?
Unknown cemeteries?
Unknown cemeteries, yeah.
Well, we have a list of things here where Drummond, the graves removed, Rosebrook, graves removed there. And there's two, Chrissy on Lower Ponus Ridge, we don't know about that. Hanford, graves have been moved there. There's one that's on Reservoir property. There's two of them that we have on, so. We think we have them all, but you know, it's, some of them are so old, you don't even know there's, you know. I guess you could count God's Acre if you wanted to count that too.
Well, I had two other thoughts too with, we have a grants person in town. I wonder if there's a way to find grants to restore cemeteries or historical grants.
So, sorry, I'm sorry, I presented the utilities commission. We received a five thousand dollar neglected cemetery grant this year with with Greg. Greg helped us put that forward. We had gotten one, we had gotten a two thousand dollar one back in twenty eighteen. They hadn't had the the grants available. And then Greg was able to help us get the five thousand, which is the maximum we could get, right? So, and that basically, we added twenty-five hundred dollars of DPW money to it. Went out to bid and we were able to take care of about nine cemeteries, nine of the eleven that Leo's been talking about. So, yeah, and then we found out last night from the DAR that there are others, that there are other grants. So we're going to sit with the, with them to find out if there are other grants available for cemetery maintenance. They're saying, because what winds up happening is if the cemetery becomes defunct, cemetery reverts to town ownership. It's no longer has a, has someone to maintain it or take care of it. Automatically reverse it, and then the town is responsible to maintain at that time. So we, we, at a DPW basis, we do our best, but we're only out there once a year before Memorial Day, trying to cut the grass to make sure that we can knock it down. And then the volunteers come in and decorate the majority of the the headstones that from veterans, in that nature, but we're not able to go there religiously, I guess, periodically or on a standard basis. We're basically piecing together our budget for every year. I've been grabbing money from the tree budget. I've grabbed money from parks. I've grabbed money from my outside contractors, I with outside contractors and try to then piece together some help and to try to help maintain. Especially if there's a volunteer, if there's a volunteer that's working with a cemetery, then we'll go out there specifically and help them either pull away the brush that they've got or then help them with some seed money for an outside contractor that might maybe help them with this, with the headstone or our tree money to then take down some trees that were necessarily, you know, that were bad, dead decay, dead decaying or, you know, lying on the ground, things of that nature. But, you know, we welcome his, his ideas because it, you know, it's one thing that, that I had looked at when I first came into office in twenty seventeen. I brought together twelve separate people from the, from the town as far as, you know, the DAR, the VFW, a couple of others. Historical Society, and I just couldn't lift it, you know, I'll be honest, you just, just couldn't lift it. Couldn't get it with all the volunteers to lift it off and say, okay, you know, you take this cemetery, you take this one, you take this one and get it, get it to work. Volunteers here and there, you know.
I think it would be great to maybe thought about it, like documenting everything. I don't know whether a website or through the Historical Society, but if that's part of it, that would be great. I think it's a great idea.
Also, that's already done. Findagrade.com. Someone in the past had gone through all those cemeteries.
Okay, because we got to move on here.
I just wanted to confirm, does it include the Maple Street Cemetery?
Right now, we hadn't had the Maple Street Cemetery added. Interestingly enough, I had a resident come to me a couple of days ago who had been maintaining the cemetery. She ran into some issues with the neighbors complaining to her that she had no right to be there to maintain the cemetery. Asked me for a letter of acceptance or a letter stating that she could go there. I gladly granted it to her. She had some brush that she wanted cleaned up. I sent the contractor out there today to help pick up that brush and she's happily helping maintain it. She's done a fantastic job maintaining that one for us. So we might not necessarily need it. It has a caretaker. Some of the cemeteries have a caretaker. Around there's twenty-seven cemeteries. It's not, you know, overall. So some have, some have caretakers, it's the neighbor next door. The majority of the ones that Leo's speaking over there, ones that are open to the public in here, you know, and that meant that those are the ones we should, that are very visible and open to the public. Those are the ones that we should be focusing on.
But the Maple Street Cemetery at this point is property of the town, correct?
I have to look and I can't, I can't verify that. I'd have to look back at what the, what the record stated at the time during the, during the whole view process, you know, I'd have to look back on that as to who owns it. I thought the view owned it.
Okay, any other comments, discussion, anything else on this topic? All right, everybody. Thank you for everything. Mike, thank you guys so much. Really great presentation.
Tucker, is this presentation on our tablets or is there a way we can get it? It is. Thanks. Sorry, mine ran out of use. Tucker, is this presentation on our tablets or is there a way we can get it? It is. Thanks. Sorry, mine ran out of use.
So uh, we're gonna move forward to our next agenda item, which is the Playhouse uh update.
I know.
I just want to kind of remind everybody, you know, we do set time on this on our um presentations here, so. I think as we move forward. Want to try to really stick to the time we're setting on these agendas, so we use our time absolutely. Efficiently as possible. Um, you know, we have a lot of knowledge base that comes before us. We have tons of great intellect here. Um, let's be exacting and precise in the questions we ask and if there's anything that's more that's needed, we can always have additional updates provided. Uh, through our committees or just through direct uh interface with the presenter, so. I just, you know, it's a new day and I think last, um, I won't say anymore, but let's get going. Um, Tiger.
I'm just gonna recuse myself and sit in the audience. Thanks.
Phones.
Eric.
That's awesome.
Well, first off, congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, congratulations, buddy. Yes, Jen, same thing, just on us. Congratulations. Janet, congratulations. So good. So, you know, I'm happy to be here. Um, I'll give you a update on the Playhouse. Um, we're actively working on the project. Um. I walked through it today. Parts of it you can walk through, parts of it I wouldn't want anybody to walk through because there's open floors and we've got plywood lying on it with necessarily that we're, you know. Safety issue whereby we wouldn't want to have you come through, but I think we can bring you through pretty soon to see exactly what's going on. Um. We cleaned out the basement, so all the mechanicals are out. Some of the mechanicals have already been delivered. Um, some of the systems, so it's sitting on the second floor, waiting for that third floor to be constructed. Um, the entire elevator shaft has been created, so now it's just waiting for the elevator. Um, thankfully, the elevator company has an opening in their schedule and they wanted to fill it and we said, please come here because they've got an opening between. Sets, so we're gonna put our elevator in and then take it out of service, basically lock it off so that the contractor can't use it, no one can use it and it'll stay there, but. It was one way for us to stay on time and allow them to come in early. You normally you'd have that elevator go a little bit later, but we had to come in early so we could stay on time. Um. Part of the wall constructing for um. Blocking off the downstairs with the theater itself, since we had taken off the wall and then we had the balcony issue. Um, is being constructed. That's on the, I guess you would call it on the Western Theater. Eastern Theater will find the exact same thing. It's a curved wall in the back that's um. That has a sound retention in it, sound detention in it. Um. And then from there. We'll keep working. The bar was delivered today. Not that we necessarily needed the bar yet, but it's here. Um, so that'll be constructed at some point in time. That was bought by Cinema Lab, brought here and we've stored it on site. Um, and this the seats are here. They made it over from Europe. And uh, they're being stored at present. Once they're available, then we'll, once the area is available, put those in. So they're working through what they need to do. You see on the outside, if you saw on the outside, where we took down the HVAC system on the outside, we'll be knocking down that white building that's off the back end. That'll be coming down within the next couple of days. We have a temporary heating system coming in. That's why we had to move the compactor out of the way. Bring temporary heating system in with a propane tank that'll be that'll be installed tomorrow. Pump temporary heat in for the uh for the winter until we were able to put in the the true system and then. Sister ourselves or back ourselves out of that at that point in time, move the compactor to a different location in the uh in the parking lot and then build the uh. Exterior staircase and ramp so we connect the Playhouse parking lot with the theater itself and Elm Street. At that point in time, but it's going quite well right now. Um, I don't know if you have any other questions, but you know, I'd like to bring you through it at some point in time. We'll just have to wait a little bit. Right now, it's still. There's still not much to see, you know, it's not as exciting as you might think it would be, but it's, you know, it's exciting, but it's not as not as nice to look at, you know, walls being installed.
It's exciting in a nerdy way. Anybody have any questions?
What's your construction schedule?
Right now, he's uh, we were looking, we had told them that the date would be May thirtieth, June one, because that was based upon his construction schedule, two hundred and seventy days. He feels that he's gonna hit that earlier than that, but I don't like to promise anything. He's hoping for in April, obviously. Cinema Lab would like us in there or like to be in there as soon as possible. Um, because they'd like to hit that kind of, they wanted to hit the Christmas rush. We're gonna miss the Christmas rush, but there's a. For some reason, there's a rush in the spring in the April, May time. They'd like to hit that. So we're gunning towards that, but I can't say that we're going to make it. Right now, we're still sticking with the fact that. He had two hundred and seventy calendar days in his in his in his schedule and that's uh, that's May thirty, June one, approximately.
Okay, thank you. There there's a whole chart in our um.
Yeah, there's a Gantt chart in in the back that uh that shows where he's at, but um, but he, that was. That was based upon where he felt, but he felt that he, you know, it's the same thing with the police department. We have an eighteen month schedule. Turner thinks they can make it in thirteen months. Rudy Giuliani said to, you know, you're promising over deliver, so that's where we're at. So we're at the eighteen month stage and saying that, okay, hopefully be thirteen months for the PD, you know, so.
Is there um, or was there asbestos that needed to be remediated? Is there anything?
There's uh, well, we have an allowance and there was a small amount in that back. Um, white building in the back gray building. There was a small amount that we uh that we had to take out. We're having the, having it. Retested right now, but it was a very small, minimal amount that had to come out of there. And then we'll have the environmentalists come back through again. We have an, we have an allowance in the contract for that. We already took some out, but we have an allowance going forward in case we find anything. But we're, we're not really in the tearing down stage and we're in the building up stage, so we're in a little bit better of a situation for that.
So when that white building comes down, that's when you have to remediate.
There's a, well, actually it's a part of that white building and then the the gray building that's sitting next to it, that's got some, that has a little bit of the flashing. We already took the flashing down, things of that nature. You'd be surprised where where it hides, you know.
Anybody else?
So I actually listened to your presentation at the Board of Slackman, but just for the, I guess for the benefit. Of this group, um, were there any? Um, was there any out outcome from the consultants that we used to relook at the project in terms of? Um, the costs and the utilities and all of that?
Uh, well, it was a very good look um from Hobbs Incorporated.
Yeah, that's right.
It was a very good look. Uh. They sat and did did a very thorough. Review of the plans viewing with the the architect, seeing what we could possibly do. But each thing that they came up with, the exact thoughts that we had whereby you run into certain situations, take the HVAC, put it on the roof. Well, the roof can't hold it, right? So then we have to put structural elements in the roof to hold that HVAC on the roof. By the time you get done doing that, same cost as putting it in the inside and it's probably better putting it inside because it's covered, right? It's protected at that point in time. So um, but then he looked through and he was very comfortable with um. The design, the methods, the contractors that we had and their pricing. So there was.
Nothing, nothing was changed in terms of.
Nothing per se. No, we, I mean, there was some small tweaks here and there. There were some certain things, but at that time we were still in the design phase, right? So it's because, so. Um, it was a very good time to bring them in for an extra set of eyes and then kind of bounce ideas off of each other. Um, and I, but so I, but I, there was no aha, we said, oh, you know, fantastic. There was nothing of that nature, unfortunately, but. There was small tweaks here and there that either saved time or saved money or both.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Anybody, anybody? That's a tiger.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, all right, the members will resume their seats. You take their seats. We will now move to our final. Agenda item, which was added this uh evening. Uh, Rita, take it away.
Thank you. So first of, uh, first off, I just want to again congratulate all of our newest members. Your willingness to serve the community is it's a, it's a wonderful thing. And I so appreciate the time that you're gonna be spending with us, so thank you so much. Um, the reason I'm making a statement tonight. Is that I felt compelled to respond to something that was publicly stated. And called into question my integrity and motives and it mentioned my work on the town council, so. I'd like to take a moment to set the record straight about some false accusations that were included in a recent Republican Town Committee email newsletter. I'm not gonna go into the details of what was said, but I do want to address a few things. Um, I am not, nor I have I ever been involved in a dark money supported organization. I have never made false statements against any candidates and I have not been silent about affordable housing. Or eight thirty G's shortcomings and I have publicly expressed my opinion that a one size fits all approach. Is not appropriate. Furthermore, as a town council member, I've been an integral part in creating an affordable housing. Commission along with all of you to constructively address and help solve for this challenge in our community. And in addition to the false accusations. Um, the author actually tried to undermine my credibility as a town council member, suggesting that New Canaanites should be concerned about my motives. And to that end, I just want to reassure New Canaanites. That I love this town. And my focus was and always will be. Um, to take my skills and experience. And um, serve the town in the best way that I can and to help it and all New Canaanites thrive. I think it's crucial that we focus on what unites us as a community. And have zero tolerance for those who may attempt to divide us in this way. Thanks.
Thank you, Rita. With that, um, there's no further business, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Good night, everybody. Thank you.